Hi, everyone. Welcome to the August 12th, 2025 regular meeting of the Placerville City Council. If you'd all rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I should not get up too fast like that. Alrighty, well, thank you very much for that. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Mayor Clarici.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gottberg.
Here.
Councilmember No.
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Here.
Thank you.
Great, we are all here. We have no ceremonial matters tonight, so we were in closed session previously. Attorney Abrahami, would you like to report out?
Yes, please. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Clarici. The council did meet in closed session to determine whether it would initiate litigation by unanimous vote of the council. The council did authorize staff to settle litigation with Purdue, the manufacturer of opioids, and we will be doing that.
Well, thank you very much. Oh, and, okay, great. Thank you very much. Would we like to adopt this agenda?
I'll move to adopt the agenda.
I'll second.
All right, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No one, thank you. Announcements, presentations to the public, brief comments by the city council. I will start to my.
Right.
I attended National Night Out on Tuesday, always a wonderful event, lots, met with lots of people, lots of neighborhoods.
I also attended National Night Out, and it was great.
I think it's gonna be a theme here. We'll go to you.
Also attended National Night Out. We actually made it to all six of our parties thanks to the perseverance of our law enforcement escort. It was awesome. Thank you to the community for all your involvement.
Yes, we all made it to National Night Out. We had a great time, so it was a wonderful thing.
Lots of hot dogs. I, too, went to National Night Out, but we only went to three places because when you don't actually have to go anywhere, you just end up talking to people. It was wonderful, very good, some excellent food, just a really good thing. Congratulations to PD staff and everybody that helped run this thing. It was fantastic and a really cool way to walk around and sit down and all that stuff, so good stuff. I, on the 16th, because it's been a while, I spoke to the Kiwanis, always a good time on our many service groups here in town. There was a chamber mixer on the river, the first annual mixer on the river, I think, is how it's gonna go, and so that was good and able to kind of talk to those folks. On the 5th, just before National Night Out, I went to the NAMI Clubhouse, which is over there on, oh, gosh, Piero's, who used to, oh, where probation used to be, and a wonderful organization, and I was very impressed with what they have there, and they showed me around and we talked a little bit, and so a really good, really good organization here in town, mental health and all of that. You should look them up on the interwebs to learn more about them. So anyway, that was my busy couple of weeks as mayor, and that's it. Okay, so.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I make one announcement, under announcements, I know.
Okay. I was gonna make an announcement.
Well, I know you have another one, but part of that one.
Go ahead.
Just announcing this Thursday at 10 o'clock, we have the groundbreaking for our broadband project. I just wanted to get that information out there. It will be located, the groundbreaking will be in front of the fairgrounds on Placerville Drive, and we're excited for that project to get going, so I just wanted to invite everyone to that if they would like to.
Yes, we are. Great, thank you for reminding us all of that. And actually, this is not in town here, but Marshall is opening their new facility tomorrow. They're having a grand opening at their facility in Eldorado Hills, so they're starting to have, well, they've already had a presence, they're increasing their presence down at the west end of the county, so that's where I will be at 5:30 tomorrow. And then we have another very important announcement to make, and it gives me great pleasure. As you know, our current city manager decided to leave us, and, you know, like so many things, there's not much we can do. We tried, we begged, we pleaded, but he insists on leaving us. I don't know if it was something we said, something we didn't say, anyway, he's retiring, and much deserved retirement, and so, and that will happen in October. So that set us on a quest for a new city manager, and we put out, it had an open, open application, and we got many, many good applications. The people of the town should be pleased with the fact that we received a number of resumes of qualified people, and so in a day and age where sometimes jobs go lacking for interest in public sector, we were gratified to get a number of good ones, and we winnowed it down to three, and we had interviews last week, and the creme de la creme was that we decided to keep that man around and make him the new city manager. So Dave, it was really not, it was a, I don't, we had good choices, it was an easy choice, and so congratulations to our new city manager. He will be taking over here fairly soon, they'll be working things out, and yeah. And maybe Dave won't leave us, and then we'll be much better off. Anyway, but you don't need to get up, but if you want to say anything, go right ahead.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for this tremendous opportunity to serve as your next city manager. I'm both honored and excited to serve Placerville in this new role, and over the past 14 years, the city has become a more professional and transparent organization that is laser-focused on providing exceptional customer service to the public, thanks to strong policies set by the council, and city manager Morris is wise and forward-thinking leadership. So I look forward to continuing the progress being made in these areas. In the coming months and years, we have several exciting projects that will enhance the experience for both Placerville residents and businesses, including but not limited to the broadband fiber project that Mr. Morris mentioned earlier, which will provide high-speed internet to more, more economical rates, and the Placerville Drive connectivity, bicycle, pedestrian, and bridge widening project, which will greatly improve the walkability and drivability in that corridor, just to name a few. So I look forward to helping staff facilitate these projects and keeping the city thriving. I'm also prepared to seek ways of shoring up the budget to help ensure the city's long-term fiscal sustainability. Mr. Morris and I have actively, are actively working on a plan to help ensure a smooth transition when he retires in early October, and I want to thank the administrative team, the city council, and the public for your trust in me leading the city in the years to come, and thanks to those of you who encouraged and counseled me along the way, you know who you are, and I also want to thank my beautiful wife, Julie, who is here tonight, and for all of her love and support during this new chapter in my career. So with that, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I do also, I'd like to thank the folks that were involved, Cleve certainly, through the process, and of course, my fellows up here who did the interviewing, and we had some good discussions about the choices that were presented to us, so I want to thank all of them if they have anything they'd like to say about this.
I'd just say this is kind of the fun things of living in a small town, is watching each other grow professionally, personally, and I'm looking forward to seeing you move into this new role, and it's well deserved. Thanks, Dave.
Yeah, okay, great, all right. Well, anyway, congratulations, now get back to work. All right. Enough of this frivolity, we have an agenda to take care of here.
Public comments.
Oh, that's it. Can we have public comments on our comments? Does anybody wish to make any comments about these items? All right, well, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of all resolutions will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise. So, does any council member wish to pull anything from our consent calendar? Nope, we have any questions about the consent calendar? Okay, I am now opening the consent calendar up for public comment. Does anybody wish to comment on our consent calendar? Alrighty, we'll bring it back up here for a motion.
I'll move the consent calendar.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember No.
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Clarici.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gottberg.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, number eight, public comment for non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. State law prohibits the council from acting on any, on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the city council under specified circumstances. The mayor reserves the right to limit the speaker's time to three minutes, which I will, and as I said before, follow the golden rule, let's treat each other with some dignity here in Town Hall if we're making comments. I'd like to say, don't say anything, you should, you should avoid saying something up there that you would not want to have said about you in the same place, so. We will open it up first for oral communication, so anybody wishing to comment may.
Peg Vanderkar. The main thing I wanted to say was congratulations, maybe that's not quite the word, but a thankfulness on behalf of housing Eldorado for one thing, and myself personally, for the city's efforts on getting projects for affordable housing going, that you're within your, within your goals, you're meeting your goals, and it's very exciting to see what's going on in this city, so I'm really proud of my town. A second thing that was ad hoc is congratulations to Mr. Morris for deciding to retire, because retirement is the greatest, greatest career now, and congratulations, congratulations to Mr. Warren for acceptance, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to comment? Ah, seeing none, we will bring it back here. Were there any written communications?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We did not pull any items from the consent calendar, we have no ordinance to consider. We do have a public hearing, however. 11.1, general plan amendment, 2501, zone change, 2501, and conditional use permit, 2504, Thompson House, Ms. Kendrick.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This item is presenting the Thompson House project, which, as you mentioned, includes a general plan amendment, a zone change, and a conditional use permit. The general plan is required to align the property's land use designation with the proposed zoning. The general plan permits up to four amendments per year, and this is the first proposed amendment. The applicant requests changing the land use from business and professional to high-density residential, which is consistent with the adjacent land use designations to the subject property. The proposed zone change seeks to reseek, seeks to rezone the property from business and professional to R3 medium-density residential, aligning with the predominant zoning of surrounding properties. The conditional use permit is mandated by Chapter 2 of the sixth cycle Housing Element for re-establishing residential structures that are non-conforming due to density. The application ensures compliance with the Housing Element as a procedural step. Per City Code 10510, a CUP is required for detached, single-family dwellings when the planning commission finds the site constraints, such as limited parcel size or regular shape or topography, render multifamily development impractical. The site does comply with the zoning development standards and the CUP approval that the use will also be conforming. Just to give you a brief historical context, the Blair Thompson House reportedly was constructed in the, by John Blair, and I have this 1851, but I know that the applicants have talked to me, there's some difference on the date, so I'm sure they'll correct me, and it may be the oldest surveyed property in the Cedar Ravine Road District that was established in 1951. The Thompson House is not a designated city, state, or national historic resource, but is included in the unadopted City of Placerville Historic Inventory. It is also not listed in the Historic Markers Inventory that was completed by Stan Morris and D. Owens in January of 2023. In 1976, the property was rezoned to business-professional residential under Use Permit 765, allowing for the conversion of, to a professional office with adjacent off-site parking. In 2018, historical preservationists and the property owners purchased the property and began restoring it as their personal residence. The subject property is 1.01 acres, located at 3062 Cedar Ravine Road. It's bordered by, bordered to the north by Pacific Street Dental and Residential Uses to the southeast and west. The site lacks curb, gutter, and sidewalk improvements. Most surrounding properties have business and professional land use designations, except for the Dental Office to the north, which similar zoning patterns. The proposed high-density residential designation supports diverse housing types and densities in Chapter 4 of the Housing Element, notes that city residential historic districts are largely built out with a few vacant parcels. Although developed, the subject property is not identified in the sixth cycle Housing Element, and that the proposed use supports general plan goal G to preserve and enhance Placerville's historical heritage as detailed in the staff report. The current medium zoning does not match the property's use, however, it does match the adjacent property's zoning, and so the applicant seeks a residential zone consistent with the adjacent single-family residential properties adjacent to them. The staff report in the general plan section does advise against spot zoning. I know the applicants would really like a single-family residential designation, but that's not consistent with their area. As part of the general plan and zone change process, we did initiate an SB 18 tribal consultation, which is government-to-government. We did send out 20 letters to tribes and/or members. We received one request for consultation, and that concurred with the Shingle Springs Band of Miwok Indians. When they advised them that there was no development, this is basically a paper project, they concluded their consultation. This project is exempt from SEQA under Section 15061B3 and the 15301 exempt facilities, as exempt projects under a Class 1 involve the operation, repair, maintenance permitting, leasing, licensing, or minor alterations of existing structures, facilities, mechanical equipment, topographical features with negligible or new expansion of the existing use. This item was advertised in the Mountain Democrat on July 23rd, and property owners within a 300-foot radius of the subject property were notified of the public hearing. No comments were received by staff. So at this time, staff would recommend that the city council open the public hearing and take testimony, waive the first full reading of General Plan Amendment 25-01 and Zone Change 25-01, and approve by title only. Approved conditional use permit 25-04, subject to the attached conditions of approval. Direct staff to prepare a notice of exemption for the applicants to record with the Eldorado County Recorder, and then direct staff to file that recorded notice of exemption with the State Clearinghouse per Senate Bill 6. This concludes my staff report. I, along with the applicants, are available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that. Our attorney aggressively hit her button there, so go ahead.
Sorry, I want to read into the record an independent basis for exemption pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act for this project. On July 1st of this year, the governor approved Assembly Bill 130, which is intended to exempt multifamily development projects from SEQA review if they meet certain criteria. This project does meet those criteria, which is why additional environmental analysis was not conducted. So the project site cannot be larger than five acres, this is not, this is about one acres. At least two-thirds of the project's total square footage must be dedicated to residential use, this, the entirety of it would be dedicated to residential use. Even if not constructed, we're looking at what the underlying zoning and general plan designation would allow. It must be either developed with an urban use, or the perimeter must be developed, which it is. There is a minimum of a 10-unit-per-acre density that would be allowed. Here, it's 12 units-per-acre density that would be allowed, and it's not located on a site where there's recognized environmental conditions, and it does not require the demolition of a historic structure. That is on a state, federal, or local register, so because the historic structure is not designated on one of those, this, this rezoning and general plan amendment meet those criteria, and this is independently subject to an AB 130 exemption.
Well, thank you for that clarification. Before we open the hearing, are there any questions for staff on this item? Okay, great, thank you very much. I will open the public hearing on this item. Anybody wishing to provide testimony at this public hearing may do so now. That would include the proponents, yeah.
My name is Jacob Rigoli, I'm one of the owners of the property.
My name is Sean Mannoring, I'm the other owner of the property.
We'll keep our comments brief, but we sure do appreciate the work and effort that the, that staff that have put into helping us explore the many pathways that we had available to us to protect historic resources, not only for Placerville, but for Eldorado County more broadly. It is genuinely our intent, and we do in fact see our role as homeowners there, it's our home, but we understand that we are lucky to own it, that it actually precedes us by nearly 200 years, and we hope to ensure that it remains a resource for the community for at least that long in the future, and we are doing all that we can to make sure that that in fact happens, including being very open with the, working with nonprofits in the area, the Historical Society, Save the Graves, other groups, to help Placerville and Eldorado County remember some of its history there, too. It's a lot of fun to do that, and that's the perfect home to do it in. So thank you again, everyone who has helped us to put this together and bring it forward for consideration tonight. Anything you want to add?
Well, thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to comment or in the public hearing here? Alrighty, then we will close the public hearing and bring it back up here for comment and/or action.
I'll move 11.1.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second on the item. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember, excuse me, Councilmember No.
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Clarici.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gottberg.
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Next. Item, discussion and action items, 12.1. Direction to amend the City of Placerville zoning ordinances, approval process and required findings, Ms. Kendrick, again.
Yeah, you're probably gonna see more of me tonight than you anticipated. Thank you, Mayor and council members. The purpose of this agenda item is to seek council direction to authorize staff to prepare an amendment to the Placerville zoning ordinance. This amendment aims to evaluate and refine the approval process and provide clearly-defined findings for specific applications. This effort aligns with the city's strategic plan, specifically Strategy 7 under Health and Public, Health and Public Safety, which focuses on developing a customer service-oriented and streamlined permitting process. The city's general plan adopted in 1990 mandates periodic review and amendment of the zoning ordinance to ensure alignment with its goals and policies. With your approval, staff will analyze the existing zoning approval process, review procedures from compatible jurisdictions, and ensure compliance with state laws, including the California Environmental Quality Act and the Subdivision MAP Act. The goal is to streamline processes, improve efficiencies, and maintain a high-quality customer service with limited resources. Staff has determined that this request is exempt from SEQA under Section 151061B3, as it does not involve a physical project or change the environment. The estimated staff time to prepare an amendment is approximately 10 hours with costs absorbable within the current budget. The city council has three options that include direct staff to proceed with the amendment, continue the item to a future meeting for future discussion, or direct staff not to proceed at this time. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, are there any questions for staff on this item? Okay, great, thank you. Seems pretty straightforward. Does anybody from the public wish to comment on this item?
Good evening, council and staff. I have found getting permits to do work at my home with, through the city, have been absolutely an easy process. It works well, and I've heard some horror stories about trying to get things permitted through the county, and that just has not been in my experience with the city, and whenever I've had someone doing work at my home, and I've offered to go get the permits, and they've said, "You would?" I said, "Sure, it's easy from the city," and they said, "Okay, you're on." So, and it has been, it's been a great process, so we have a great little city.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else wish to comment?
Good evening, Michael Drobish, Placerville. I support the concept of going through the code and cleaning it up. It's amazing if you go and read sections that are written in the 60s or even the 1990s, it's very succinct, to the point, few words, and seems like nowadays, an ordinance just piles a whole bunch of language, just drops it on the code, and nobody ever seems to go back in and clean it up. So, I know that's not really the full scope of this, is cleaning up the code, but I'm sure parts are gonna be shown to be in conflict. I'd love to help out, I don't know how I could do that, I don't know if I just contact Carol with ideas, if there's any, can be any kind of citizen committee or anything, and then I want to make sure that we're careful on doing streamlined, over-the-counter permits when it comes to historic district and structures. The only way I would support it is if it's an exact like-for-like, the same siding, the same scale, the same material, and I wouldn't have a problem for that. If it's gonna be in addition to a historic building or district, I think it needs to go to the planning commission for compatibility with that, so those are my considerations or concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else wish to comment? All right, well, let's bring it back up here. Any comments from us? Are there any comments about the comments? What was our expectation? What was, what was our expectation? Is this gonna be one of, you'll bring things back to us, the public input will be through this process here? Okay.
The actual zoning ordinance amendment, the draft would go to Planning Commission.
Right, okay.
We would advertise that 20 days in advance per requirement, and 20-day advertised notice for going forward to city council, so, but I can talk with Mr. Dirk Drobish.
Yes, good, okay, great. That thumbs up back there, good. All right, so we have it back here, if there's no comments or questions.
I just have, yeah, I just want to make sure that, you know, during this process, that we're just very careful not to diminish any of the protections that are inherent in our historic districts, let's be very careful about that, but otherwise, I think this is a great idea.
Okay, great, all right.
I'll move staff's recommendation.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, you can figure out who's second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember No.
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Clarici.
You've got me off now. Aye.
And Vice Mayor Gottberg.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Well, you know, keeps us on our toes. Consideration of authorizing a request for proposal for ongoing environmental services to support CEQA compliance. Ms. Kendrick.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. The purpose of this agenda item is to seek council direction to authorize the issuance of a request for proposal, or RFP, for on-call environmental services to support compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, or as known CEQA, for future projects. This aligns with the city's strategic plan, specifically Strategy 7 under Health and Public Safety, which emphasizes a customer service-oriented and streamlined permitting system. Historically, CEQA compliance has been managed in-house, with staff preparing environmental documents like initial studies and negative declarations. However, recent reductions in staff capacity have limited our ability to handle these tasks internally. Outsourcing these services with costs covered by applicants and a proposed 15% to 20% administrative fee will reduce staff workload, ensure CEQA compliance, and maintain a high-quality customer service. The issuance of an RFP is an administrative action and not a project under CEQA, as it has no direct environmental impact. The cost to prepare the RFP is approximately $200, requiring about 2 hours of staff time with additional time to review proposals based on submissions. These costs can be absorbed into the current budget. The applicant-funded approach with administrative fees aligns with the strategic plan's good governance strategy 3A, promoting efficient and cost-effective service delivery. So at this time, the city council has three options that include direct staff to prepare an RFP for on-call environmental consulting services, continue this item to a future meeting for future discussion, or direct staff not to proceed with the RFP and maintain in-house CEQA processes and explore alternatives. That concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for staff?
I just have one quick one. Approximately how much more of a cost burden is this going to be placed on an applicant, do you think, over what doing it in-house with staff would be?
Well, I don't know the cost to actually prepare the document. So they'd hire their own consultant, but what I've seen for initial studies with a mitigated NEGDAG, typically the peer review might run about 20,000. It's, like I said, it's, there's just no staff, and typically, these are done by CEQA practitioners. Most lawsuits on planning projects and entitlements are CEQA-based. So ensuring that we have a product that can be defended, both for the city and the applicant, I think is of high importance.
And just to add to that, so CEQA allows an applicant to prepare an environmental document with their consultant, or to have the city prepare one. And then the third option is if, you know, the applicant is preparing the, and by applicant, I mean their consultant preparing the environmental document, then the city necessarily wants to peer review that, right? So oftentimes, though not always, the applicant will just say, "City, you go ahead and prepare it, and we will reimburse you for that cost," because it's the most efficient from an economic perspective.
So we're not talking about a huge burden on applications moving forward. It's not going to be a big change for our applicants.
It actually, doing something like this benefits the applicant. Applicants oftentimes, time is money, and they want efficiency. So if the city has an on-call consultant, they can more expeditiously move the project forward.
Excellent. Thank you.
And it's a cost they would incur anyway, because they'd either be paying somebody to do it, or they have us pay for something. Okay. Any other questions? Would the public wish to comment on our potentially having an RFP for these services?
I think I would generally support that. The only question would be, would it be with like a firm where they had multiple staff that could do that? Because if you only had one person listed as the go-to, and they're doing a bridge for the next three years, something like that. So maybe you either have multiple firms, or a firm large enough with staff. I really like the staff report showing how much time was put into the staff report, how much the proposed item could cost. I hadn't seen that before for decades, so I applaud that. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Michael. All right. Are there any other comments on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back up here. Anything else from the council besides a motion?
I motion for option one for 12.2.
All right, great.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember No.
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Clarici.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gottberg.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. 12.3, Authorization for City Manager to Execute a Fee-Differral Agreement for the Middletown Apartment Complex at 180 Middletown Road. Ms. Kendrick.
Thank you, Mayor and City Councilmembers. The purpose of this agenda item is to seek city council approval to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a fee-differral agreement for designated impact fees associated with the Middletown Apartment Complex, a multifamily affordable housing project at 180 Middletown Road. This action supports the city's regional housing needs allocation goals and aligns with the strategic plan's fiscal stability, sustainability strategy that identifies financial opportunities. The Middletown Apartment Complex has a valuation of 12.8 million. It does have a building permit invoice that details impact fees totaling 1.8 million, including fire, park, traffic, and sewer capital improvement charges. Senate Bill 937, signed into law in 2024, allows deferral of these fees for affordable housing projects until the certificate of occupancy is issued without interest to enhance project feasibility. The proposed agreement will defer the fees, ensuring compliance with 937 and local ordinances, and includes safeguards like a lien or financial security if needed, and require full payment upon project completion. This deferral, can't talk either, sorry. The deferral supports the project's financial vitality, potentially saving up to 1% of development cost while ensuring the city collects the full amount upon completion. This action aligns with state housing mandates, including Senate Bill 423, and does not impact the general fund. As these fees are designated for infrastructure, the deferral agreement is an administrative action exempt from CEQA review, and it involves no physical environmental impact. The council does have three options at this time that include authorizing the city manager to negotiate the agreement as outlined, deny authorization allowing the city council to execute the agreement in place, or modify the terms to include financial securities such as a performance bond or letter of credit, which could increase developer costs. This concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I know we also do have the applicant in the audience as well.
Yes. Are there any questions for staff at this time? Okay. We will open this up to public comment, and the applicant, if they choose to comment. I don't know if they do or not. They don't have to. There's no, okay, thank you very much. Does anybody else not the applicant wish to comment on this item? Okay. We'll bring it back here. Any, golly, we're a compliant crowd here.
I guess I do have a quick, I mean, is there any advantage to the city to require securities on this agreement, or make the case for not having any liens or securities on the fee-deferment?
I suppose there, you could argue there's an advantage in that we, that's just another guarantee that we do get the funding, the money, the fees eventually. However, I don't think it's critical, because we both basically hold the keys to the housing. They don't get a key until they.
Right. They won't get the certificate of occupancy until these are paid.
Correct.
So there's kind of a built-in, built-in security.
Yep.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Anything else? Motion?
I will move that we authorize the city manager to negotiate the agreement as outlined.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember No.
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Clarici.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gottberg.
Aye.
Well, thank you very much. Okay. Ooh, this is a long one. 12.4. Consider adopting a resolution retroactively approving and affirming the 2025-2026 Memorandum of Understanding with the International Union of Operating Engineers, Stationary Engineers, Local 39, and authorizing the mayor, city manager, city attorney, and the labor representative to execute the same, and adopting resolution retroactively approving and affirming the 2025-2026 salary and benefit provisions for the confidential unit, executive management unit, and supervisory unit. Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is actually a routine item, and the reason it's on discussion is because it affects executive management salaries. So at your meeting held on March 11th of this year, the city council ratified the tentative agreement with the International Union of Operating Engineers, Station Engineers, Local 39 in closed session, and the city attorney reported out the tentative agreement in open session that same evening. The deal points included in both tentative agreement and the proposed Memorandum of Understanding are outlined on Page 2 of the staff report. Following a longstanding past practice, staff recommends that the city council approve similar salary and benefit provisions for the unrepresented, non-sworn positions within the confidential, executive management, and supervisory employee units. The total projected cost of the proposed Local 39 MOU and salary and benefit provisions for the three unrepresented units totals, excuse me, $373,362. The city council adopted the fiscal year 25-26 operating budget, which incorporated the $373,000 in additional costs mentioned earlier. Tonight, staff is requesting that the council approve the new MOU with Local 39 and the salary and benefit provisions by resolution for the regular, non-sworn positions within confidential, executive management, and supervisory employee units. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions for staff on this item? All right. Does the public wish to comment on this item? All right. We'll bring it back up here. What's the pleasure?
I'll move to approve 12.4.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember No.
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Clarici.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gottberg.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Item 13. Council reports from other agency meetings, Eldorado County Transit Authority.
Yeah, we met, and we had a couple of action items, just increasing a budget for some security surveillance on the new parking ride, and adding some new mobile routers in the buses for better ridership. And a couple of informational items of final closing budget for capital improvement plan and for ridership shuttle program, and then our newsletter for September 2025. That was it.
All righty. Eldorado County Transportation Commission.
We approved the draft Eldorado County Regional Transportation Plan for 2545, and you can go on the website or their Facebook and get links to see that.
Cool. Olafco.
We appointed the review panel for the selection of the consultant for the fiscal analysis of Eldorado Hills Cityhood, so that process is moving forward. And so we'll see what happens. So, yeah.
That was very exciting, intriguing. All right, SECCOG. The SECCOG board meets on the 21st. I did meet as part of the Transportation Committee, and there were two interesting things. One, it's really never a good idea to not tell your elected officials when you're making plans, moving millions of dollars around, because when they don't know about it, or at least say they don't know about it, they get really, really ornery. This did not include us, because we were not part of this process, but it was fun to watch. And then, they are reimagining transit in that part of the world, and we better keep a weather eye out on that, because RT wants to come and scoop everything up, and the last thing you want is those people running your transit system. So that is going to go out, and I'll probably get calls on that. All right, that's it for SECCOG. Pioneer Community Energy Board.
We have the month off.
Plasterville Fire Safe Council.
We met, and we predominantly talked about how the National Night Out event went.
Fantastic. Opportunity Knox.
We did meet, but nothing of interest for the city.
Okay, great. Thank you. Does anybody wish to comment on the things we do? No? Okay. I'm surprised y'all didn't want to run up and say something. All right. Number 14, Request for Future Agenda Items. Do we have any requests? I would like to request something that was brought to my attention, and that is, is that there are bylaws for the Planning Commission, and they need to be kind of evaluated. That had come up as a topic. So I was, I was going to find out if we wouldn't want to have staff to bring us something in that regard, if the city manager wants to elaborate on that rambling ask, you know.
Just mention that currently, the bylaws are written and approved by the Planning Commission. It was our thought that perhaps they should be approved by the city council. So the idea is to bring that back to you, to see if you want to do that, and that'll be up to you. But just making sure that those bylaws are in alignment with what the council expects the Planning Commission to be doing. So we'll bring that option back to you and see what you want to do.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Anything else? Okay, great. Does anybody want to comment on our things? Yeah, we ask for everything.
Perks, obviously in my non-personal capacity, it was a surprise to talk about the bylaws, because it's been three years that they've been not on the agenda, and we've asked that they be on the agenda. One of the explanations was that the previous director of planning said he had a question about constitutional law, which always surprised me, because for three years, he'd be no more than 15 feet from the city attorney. But that was three years. I know all you have to do under the bylaws is you request that the subject be on the agenda, and that got ignored. I just don't know why we're adding this extra scope. It seems like if you want an independent body, you should let the commission consider bylaws on their own and see what they have to offer, as they have been proposing to do for three years, at least some of the members. So I think that's the more appropriate. It's just new to me that you're asking that it go to the city council first, and then to the independent body. I just didn't understand the explanation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, before I forget, I would like to somehow, on the agenda, know which items are capable of public comment, with some kind of mark or color or something. I mean, you do a good job of stopping and asking for, I mean, but I had the opposite problem at the last Planning Commission meeting, trying to speak to a noted agenda item, and I was denied. So just, I don't know if an asterisk could be put on there or something, but had a problem with it at the Planning Commission. Also, I don't, so the Planning Commission always would bring back the bylaws yearly for review, seldom little changes. And it was, I don't think, how long has the Planning Commission been going, since 1960s at least? And it doesn't seem to be a problem with, you know, why should it come to council for approval? I think Planning Commission can create their bylaws, run it past legal. If there's a problem, it'd get ironed out at the next meeting. And that was all, and then a request for a future agenda item is how do I protect our Druid Monument and our other monuments? Because the Druid Monument's been being violated the last two weeks with people burning candles on it. So I don't know how we can do something about that, but it's, it really frustrs me. So just send me the video.
Thank you, Michael. All right. Anyone else wish to comment on that? My understanding for public comment is it's basically almost every item, almost every major category of things on it requires public comment. I mean, I, we don't ask about public comment like an adjournment, or I think the upcoming items, because you can read those, but otherwise, we try to do that, at least here. All right. Got to get a City Manager and Staff Reports, 15.1, received and filed, June 2025, Fire Station 25 Run Report, Chief Cordero.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your board packet, you'll have the run stats for Station 25 during the month of June. Crew's been remaining quite busy, and one note of interest is Truck 28 flowed water on its first fire during the month of June, so it's no longer a brand-new truck for us.
Ah, very good. Nice. Thank you. Any questions for the chief? All right. All right. We will run through all these and then open public comment. 15.2, Development Services Department Monthly Statistics. Ms. Kendrick, again.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. This is my last one, I promise. The purpose of this agenda item is to present to city council and public with the Development Services Department's monthly statistics for June 2025, covering permitting activities and code compliance efforts. These statistics provide insight into departmental performance and reflect local economic trends. In June of 2025, the Development Services Department issued 41 permits and completed 36 with a total construction value of 2.5 million, averaging $54,722 per permit, notably for single-family dwellings at Cedars Ridge, with valuations between 412,000 and 513,000 contributed significantly to this activity, indicating strong residential growth. The department collected $31,928 in fees. Building Division did conduct 14 plan reviews, issued nine certificates of lateral compliance, and completed 13 virtual inspections, leveraging technology for efficiency. The planning department processed one code enforcement, conditional use permit application that the city council approved tonight, aligning land use proposals with our zoning regulations, and code enforcement managed 117 active cases, addressing violations across multiple categories to ensure a safe and compliant community. Staff recommends that the council receive and file this report and provide any comments or direction as deemed appropriate. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for staff on this item? Okay, very thorough. Thank you. 15.3, let's see, that's the sales tax. Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So after two straight years of negative returns on our sales tax, we finally have some good news for you. So the quarter ended March 31st. Your Bradley Burns General Fund sales tax increased by $19,123.13%. That did include prior period adjustments. When you remove those adjustments, the increase was actually $31,504 or 2.3%. 2.3% never looked so good. So, anyway, primarily due to, the increase is primarily due to increases in autos and transportation, state and county pool, which is your online sales tax, and building and construction sales tax. The adopted budget for 2425 assumed a $23,762 or 1.7% increase, so the actual increase was $7,742 or 0.6 percentage points higher than budget. Eldorado County didn't perform as well in the unincorporated areas at 1.1%, Sacramento region slightly better at 3.4%, and the state, we performed better. They only performed at 0.3% growth. Your top 25, we appreciate all of our businesses, especially our top 25 generating, sales tax generating businesses. So Save Mart and Shell were added to the list this quarter, and Les Schwab Tire Center and Sierra Nevada Tire Center dropped off, but I'm sure they'll be back. And then your Measure H, J, and L sales taxes performed slightly better in the first quarter. For example, Measure J on the cash basis actually showed a $28,296 or 8.4% decrease, but that included prior period adjustments. When you remove those adjustments, the Measure J adjusted economic data increase was $9,101 or 2.8%. We assumed actually a decrease of 1.3% or $4,161, so we were actually $13,262 or 4.1 percentage points higher than budget. And this increase is actually due to increases in building construction, autos, transportation, and fuel and service stations. HDL forecasts sales tax statewide to remain flat in fiscal year 2425, actually a negative 0.8% across the state, and experienced mild growth, excuse me, in 2526 at 1.8%. The opening of Desi's Pizza Bites, the second grocery outlet, and O'Reilly's Auto Parts should help strengthen Placerville's sales tax moving forward. And then looking at your sales tax trends and economic drivers from HDL, overall, the projected sales tax economic trends reported in June are about the same as those in aggregate that were reported in March. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Warren on that? Thumbs up. Very good. Buy more things in the city limits. Don't go outside the city. Anyway. Well, thank you very much. Are there any comments on item, our city manager and staff reports?
Really? It looked at the data, it looked like there was an increase in sales tax for automobiles. That was the lead, and then some other items like consumer use was down. So I'm wondering if there's any way to figure out how much of that was people buying cars in anticipation of tariffs going up, and then, which would give us some signal about what to expect next year. Is there any way to evaluate those kind of things? Because that's, the good news is that the figures went up largely because of automobile sales, it looked like to me, if I read it correctly.
That's a darn good question. I don't know if we get that level of granular sort of prognostication from HDL. I mean, I don't imagine Ron Thompson asks people why they're buying their cars, he just sells it to them, but yeah.
Yeah, there's been some headwinds, you know, with higher interest rates, but the good news is the average used car age is, I believe, just over 12 years, and that's the point to where, I mean, as long as cars are lasting now, you're going to see a lot of used cars fail, and so that's going to stir up the used car market as well as the new car market, so that's in our favor. You might notice that the growth in sales tax for the first quarter in auto sales was actually stronger in the add-on taxes, Measure H, J, and L. What that tells me is that residents outside the city limits potentially are buying at a higher rate than those in the city limits. So, because we get sales tax in the Bradley Burns for outside auto sales, but not outside. So hopefully that makes sense. Thanks.
All right. Very much. So that's what we've come to expect here. Good insights. Okay. Is there anything else then from that? Thank you very much. You can read the upcoming items, and if there's nothing else, we will stand adjourned. Thank you very much. All right.